No, thank you.
Well, why are you here then?
Because she had to go home.
Alright, so you have a form in also?
I do, but this is my mother's, my mother-
Alright, so we'll do both, how's that?
Um, it's fine.
So we'll do Con- hold on, Constance Piglin and Lynn.
Yes, my mother gave me a little thing to read here. She wants to know, um, when are you going to appoint a new Commissioner Plan in Development? Since Mr. Zeig and Ms. Aguirre are in the process of training over all commercial applications, Kathleen DeTaurus and Mr. Fabrizio. And, um, is, who, is, who's Kathleen DeTaurus, that's what she wants to know.
I recognize the name as a employee of D and D.
I, I, I think, and I'm not sure, I think she was Mr. Vendo's assistant.
But if you know that, why are you, why are you asking?
I'm asking you because I, if I said to you, she's Mr. Vendo's assistant, you may say to me, no, that was true, I'm asking you.
Does anyone on the board know Kathleen DeTaurus is, I don't know. I don't know.
Okay, that's, that's why I, I'm asking. I have a letter here, Department memo, that it says that Monday, May 16th, all, any commercial applications submitted at the building counter should then be given to Kathleen DeTaurus rather than to zoning amendments for pending commercial applications should also be given directly to Kathleen DeTaurus. Applications for change of zone, for town board docs, landmark site plans, et cetera, should all be given directly to Kathleen DeTaurus. These measures are being taken to ensure that Mike Fabrizio, Superintendent of Building, has full knowledge and control over what is transpiring in his division. Mike will assign applications to the staff, will review, and will handle workflow in planning. No applications or amendments, et cetera, should be given to or accepted by any other person in Planning Division except for Mike Fabrizio and Kathleen DeTaurus. I, my, my big mother's question would be, if she were here, is why, if Mr. Zeig and Ms. Aguirre are doing their jobs, where, I've never heard of these people before. Are they new to planning and development?
The names are familiar to me, they're all outstanding employees of Planning and Development, I also miss the site in the room, but what's your particular question?
My question is, why isn't everything going through Planning and Development? Why are we separating the commercial, isn't it, under the same Planning and Development? Have commercial going somewhere else rather than to Planning and Development, Mr. Zeig and Ms. Aguirre? I don't understand, I've never heard of this man before, Mr. Fabrizio, I didn't know-
Mr. Fabrizio has been around for a very long time. What did he say his title was, Building, uh, kind of Building Division?
His Superintendent of Buildings.
These are, these are, these are interesting-
And I understand that they're actually red-born and Stephen might know something.
Stephen might know something, but these are interdepartmental judgments made by deputies, and they make the determination on how to best handle the workflow. I mean, if you want, I'll ask him to respond as to how it's structured that way, but Stephen, can you shed any light on this?
But she says the date of the memo was like-
She said May 16th.
May, it was May, it was sent out May 13th, but as of May 16th, 2016, that was recommended.
You mentioned to me before when I spoke here, but I didn't know the date on the memo, I haven't seen it before.
Well, the date on the memo was May 13th or May 16th?
May 13th is the date of the memo, May 16th is the date of the application.
Read the memo one more time so Mr. Marks can hear.
Who's it from?
It should be it, it should be it.
To, from, to all staff, from Timothy Zeig and Diana Aguirre. Subject, commercial applications. Please be advised that starting Monday, May 16th, 2016, any commercial application submitted at the building counter should then be given to Kathleen DeTaurus rather than to zoning, zoning, and it's something cut off. Amendments for pending commercial applications should also be given directly to Kathleen DeTaurus. Applications for change of zone, for town board docs, landmarks, site plans, et cetera, should all be given directly to Kathleen DeTaurus. These measures are being taken to ensure that Mike Fabrizio, Superintendent of Building, has full knowledge and control over what is transpiring in his division. Mike will assign applications to his staff or review and will handle workflow in planning. No application or amendments, et cetera, should be given to or accepted by any other person in the Planning Division except for Mike Fabrizio and Kathleen DeTaurus.
Okay, Mr. Marks, what sentence?
To all staff.
I know you're not on staff, how did you get a copy of them, I'm just curious.
Yeah, it's magic, actually, I just-
Well, I guess you-
I know, I, I, there are things unfortunately that I find in my mailbox, I don't know what they are.
Oh, you found, another shoe, you just opened your mailbox one day and found that memo?
I found some really good stuff.
Alright, well, your time is up, but Stephen, I'll allow another minute, so if you have any, can you help respond?
Sure, I'll speak with him and find out.
Okay, go on, so you go.
It sounds consistent with what you had stated about the ability to control internally about who goes-
Yeah, I mean, I don't know any better answers, I sit here with every tendency to hallucinate. You're gonna move on to your topic, so you-
Yes, but my topic is kind of like in touch with this, because my, my problem with all of this is, I'm going to be asked this question and you're probably gonna get mad at me, but that's okay, I'm everything-
I never get mad at you, what's the-
I, I, I have heard, and I know that this is speculation, and I don't want to like reiterate, but I've heard that Mr.-
But before you say something that's speculation, can you, can you tell me what is based on, you know, because-
It's based on gossip.
Based on gossip?
Yes.
Is that really, is that really worthy of public comment unless you have something-
Well, when you used to work for Star Magazine, yeah, it's, gossip is good.
Do you really, do you really think it's, do you really think it's fair if everybody came up and spoke gossips, not about you or me?
It's not, it's not really gossip, it's something that, it's my attention, that whether we gossip or not, it's, it seems like, true. And I'm trying to put it in my mind that this would not happen, but I have a feeling that it does.
Could I put it down?
You, you can shut me down if you wish.
No, go ahead, listen to-
It's okay, I mean, I will get through eventually.
No, I think everybody wants to hear the gossip.
Well, no, we, we, I, it's been told to me that Mr. Vendo is still running the department, and unfortunately, this memo makes me believe even more so. I'm willing to find out, and I find out on my own, how is this going, but if this is true, it really is bad for the town because he is a felon. And as of June 29th, we don't know whether he's going to court jail or not, but I would like to know and feel comfortable that he's no longer here. And that's why this bothers me, because Mr. Zeig and Ms. Aguirre, we have no new people running the, had no new Commissioner, and why is this being given to these, his supposed assistant? And by the way, his, his office is still, from what I understand, is still full of his stuff, which why, I don't know, if I'm moving out, everyone freaked out. And I, I would like to know for my own benefit whether or not this is true, if, if it's not, I hope it's not, I don't think it would be, but-
No, you're, you're, you'll be satisfied. Mr. Ripley is not here, I don't believe he's darkened, the doors are down the whole since he left back in January. He is not in any manner whatsoever running the Department of Planning and Development. As far as the other indicia that you appointed to, which in your mind seems to put together some kind of conspiracy theory or what have you, or gossip, whatever you want to call it, I, I, it's not much strength to your argument, what's the connection between the memo and Mr. Ripley, what's the connection between the physical state of his office and whether or not he's carrying on or working in the department, I just don't understand it.
Because I have also been told by other people-
Who told you?
I can't, you know what, I don't want-
But you can't reveal the source of, alright, then I-
You have to understand, and honestly, I did work for Star Magazine for a short time, so anything that is a little bit, will be fired, a lot fired sometimes. But the point is that I've been told that he has run into people, that there are places that he's working out of, and that he has told somebody in particular, I'm just telling you, this is what I've heard, the person told me, that he said, "I am not working at the town anymore, but if you, I can, I'm still working from outside the town, and if you need anything, give me a call, and I'll get it done for you." That really smacked me in the head because I'm-
Can you tell me who told you that?
No.
Alright, well, when you, when you-
If I can, I will.
Well, you have to, you definitely talk a little bit.
No.
You don't want me to talk it over?
No, no, sorry.
Well, you know, when you tell me things like, you read a memo which really doesn't appear to bear any relationship or support like you apparently tried to establish, when you tell me that, I'd like to share with you some gossip, when you tell me some phantom person put something in your mailbox, and that same phantom person or another phantom person told you these stories, I, I really don't have much to say. I can only tell you, and I think I speak for the whole board, Mr. Marks has been my own personal liaison, if you will, to the Department of Planning and Development. Stephen, is there any basis in reality for any of the conclusions that Ms. Nickman is trying to draw?
Not a shred of doubt.
Okay, there you go.
For now, thank you.
For whatever, thank you very much. Edward Berman, 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 I'm sorry.
Didn't want to hear any of that.
It's Berman, right, let me see.
I guess it's Berman, B E R M A N T.
Berman.
That's not it.
Well, wait, if I'm not close, I believe it's-
That's Berman, accent on the last syllable. Berman, yes, that's it.
Okay, very good.
I've been a resident of the Town of Oyster Bay.
Chris, I'm there. I'm, I'm on the town board, what is it, you need milk tonight or what? The keys are lost? Okay, 31 years old, and the keys are lost, okay, I'll talk to you later. Yeah, I know, it does happen. I'm sitting on the town board in front of a door in public, and they're all looking at me like, what is it going to be? And your big livestream on TV, right? My 31-year-old daughter, Willster Carter. Mr. Berman.
Thank you. I've been a resident of the town since 1973, and I was motivated to attend this meeting after I read a front-page article in Newsday, the edition of May 16th, that indicated as follows, Oyster Bay's credit plunge. And I read the article with, with quite a bit of concern about the prospects for the town going forward, and you made a comment earlier about the, the high regard in which the, the Oyster Bay community is compelled, that people want to live here, and that's ultimately the concern that I have, because if this is a slippery slope that we're on, it's a matter of concern. So I have a question that's in three parts. Where might I find a list of the institutional purchasers of Oyster Bay municipal obligations? Where might I find a list with amounts owing of the Oyster Bay municipal obligations coming due within the next five years? And do you know which of these holders are prohibited by law and/or their own policies from holding municipal debt rated below investment grade?
Okay, Bob, did you provide that?
I gotta go.
Oh, I thought it was Bob, I'm sorry. Where's Rob, Darienzo, Rob, here? If we got it was- I don't know if we could provide you information this moment, but you-
Sure.
Rob!
I'm not good.
Rob, did you hear the question?
I started listening, and I came right down.
I hate to be difficult, but you, we won't count it against your time, if you just run through it again, the items that you-
Sure, and I have a copy if you'd like to-
Alright, we'll pick that up, but you-
Sure. The question is, where might I find a list of the institutional purchasers of Oyster Bay municipal obligations? Where might I find a list with amounts owing of the Oyster Bay municipal obligations coming due within the next five years? And do you know which of these holders are prohibited by law and/or their own policies from holding municipal debt rated below investment grade?
Okay, so the list-
Here, give me a copy of what you read, so-
That's, that's fine, the list of our current note holders would be contained, our financial advisors would have that, so if you wanted to, I can go, I can find that information now, we don't have ourselves, so, sir.
He understands you don't have it, but you-
The schedule of our outstanding debt, I have it on my computer upstairs, I can tell you how much debt we have to do each day for the next 30 years, and whether or not it's, they're allowed to have, hold non-investment grade debt, I would need to find and answer that. Again, I don't know the, I don't know the investors.
No, sir, I can appreciate that, but my concern is that if there are holders of Oyster Bay debt who are not, not permitted by law or policy to continue to hold it, that could present a, a serious issue for the town.
We've been given no indication, we don't believe that's the case at this time, and we're constantly-
Absolutely.
Okay.
How much time, within a day or two, or how long would it take to put it together?
We have a, you know, we have a meeting set tomorrow with financial advice, I guess, tomorrow.
Okay, if you would, if you would leave a phone, not out loud, if you would leave a way for Mr., that's Rob Darienzo, who's the Director of Finance, if you would leave a number with Rob so he can communicate with you, he can tell you when to pick up, do you know?
Thank you very much.
And then we'll hear from you again, and see how you react to that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Berman, no, Berman.
Berman, you got it.
Manicha Gafuzada, Manicha Gafuzada.
I think she loves supervisor, I believe she spoke to the, to D and D, but I missed you.
Okay, can you just make sure? Representatives Hamza and Medina, it says wagon, so that would be the same? Yes. Okay, Robert Rip.
Well, I've just had a couple of concerns I'd like to bring to your attention. First one I'd like to start off with is the Town of Oyster Bay Sports Commission. To begin with, I'd like to just quote the New York State Constitution, Article 8, Section 1, "No county, city, town, village, or school," it's a school district, excuse me, "shall give or loan any money or any property to or an aid of any individual, private corporation, or association, or private undertaking." I'd like to just, to give you a little background, some information that I found on the internet, just like to quickly read to you, this is an article from the, the United States Professional Tennis Association, it was published on April 3rd, 2014, and it reads, "The United States Professional Tennis Association, now, has been invited to take part in the Town of Oyster Bay Sports Commission 2014 Symposium Series. The first topic in this series will be knee and shoulder injury awareness and prevention, hosted by Dr. William J. Schwartz. Dr. William J. Schwartz, physical therapist, along with Sports Commission of Oyster Bay, will be giving a series of sports medicine symposiums, the first will be April 3rd, 2014. The topic is knee injury and prevention awareness. The symposium is to address the common injuries seen in student athletes and gain some ideas on prevention techniques to give you and your athletes the best advantage possible towards longevity and staying on the field, and has contact information, Dr. William J. Schwartz at oysterbaysportscommission.org." And I also happened to notice a story in, excuse me, in the Sciocce Gerico Tribune, this was dated July 20th, 2014, and it reads, "To Bay Hosts Sports Injury Events. The Town of Oyster Bay Sports Commission, Town of Oyster Bay Sports Commission, T.O. S.B.C., hosted the first presentation of its Town of Oyster Bay Sports Commission Symposium Series focusing on knee and shoulder injury awareness and prevention at the Hicksville Athletic Center, that's the Town of Oyster Bay Athletic Center. The program was led by Town of Oyster Bay Sports Commission Board Member, William J. Schwartz, P.T.P.C., and provided invaluable information to all attendees, all attendees. Dr. Schwartz, who played divisionally in the cross of Villanova, has a practice in Massapequa and is well-known and highly respected in the fields of sports-related physical therapy. He is often sought out by the area's top athletes. The symposium was the first of a series of free forums scheduled and sponsored by the Town of Oyster Bay Sports Commission. The next symposium slated for July, excuse me, slated for Thursday, July 31st, once again at the Hicksville Athletic Center located on 65 South Broadway in Hicksville, will center on football-related injuries." And then it goes on saying, "The forum will not only focus on treating football-related injuries, but perhaps more importantly, on how to help avoid them by utilizing proper technique and instruction," said Town of Oyster Bay Sports Commission Chairman Leonard Genova. "Like all of our Town of Oyster Bay Sports Commission symposiums, the agenda will rate the topics that have been established in the forefront of the sports community." And on that add, there's actually a photograph of yourself, Mr. Vendetta, actually, there's a photograph of yourself, Town Attorney Leonard Genova, and at that time, I believe, he was a county legislator, Michael Vendetta, and the caption says, "Town of Oyster Bay Sports Chairman Leonard Genova Center was joined by members and supporters of the Town of Oyster Bay Sports Commission prior to a recent symposium sponsored and orchestrated by the organization. Among those on hand were Nessa County Legislature and advisor to the Board, Michael Vendetta, and Oyster Bay Town Supervisor and Executive Board Member, John Vendetta." I'd also like to bring your attention to this, this printout of the Town of Oyster Bay Sports Commission, this is their actual website, which I'd like to just let you know, I, I come up and discussed this in the past, Mr. Vendetta, this page has been removed from the internet now. I can tell you that Mr. Sabelico, actually, James Sabelico was responsible for the webpage. Now, in this page is a picture of Leonard Genova, and it says, "A message from Leonard Genova, Chairman, Town of Oyster Bay Sports Commission. The Town of Oyster Bay Sports Commission is a non-for-profit organization dedicated to developing, enhancing, and enhancing the athletic experience for participants of all ages." And it also lists the Town of Oyster Bay Sports Commission, the board members, John Vendetta, Leonard Genova, Frank Moserino, Tom Sabelico, Andrew Rothstein, Louis Bonanza. It also lists the executive committee, which includes John Ellsworth. "Mr. Supervisor, when I questioned you months ago about the Town of Oyster Bay Sports Commission, you feigned ignorance, just like you feigned ignorance when questioning regards to Patricia Bondello, Rich Paselli, and Robbie Chopper, when we originally spoke about them. Like when I questioned you in regards to the 4.9 million in capital improvements-"
Time's up, but before, before I let you go-
Excuse me, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I waited here for four hours, this is very important, I believe that the Town of Oyster Bay, the Town Attorney could be violating the New York State Constitution, and you're gonna shut me down on the five minutes?
No, you're, you're, it may or may not be very important, but rules are very important as well, and we have a five-minute rule, but I will tell you, because if it's anything that's important, that's the last thing you said, then I don't think it's particularly important at all for you to say that I told you who, that I don't know who Pat Corinello, Rich Paselli, or, I mean, I've just told you, you just, now you just be-
Excuse me, all you have to do, I, I don't, we don't get to argue, all you do is get in the videos.
You're right, you're right, you're being silly, you're absolutely being silly, it's laughable what you do, but anyway, your time is up, I will, I will do this, you apparently are concerned that there's a problem with the Sports Commission and that the Town Attorney may be guilty of some wrongdoing, is that the thrust of the-
Would you like to hear about it?
No, I just told you-
No, you don't want to hear about it?
No, I just told you, we'll hear about it the next time you have an opportunity to speak, but I'm trying to-
Oh, you want me to give you a five-minute argument?
No, I'm just trying to get a bottom line, I'm trying to be a gentleman, but you know what?
You're not.
No, I'm trying to be a gentleman, so let's end it, and I'll, we'll just take the comments on the floor, so thank you very much.
Good luck, John.
You too, good luck to you. Kevin McKenna, you're up.
I gave you the full name this week, last week.
I see that, what was that, that map business?
Well, I figured I could shorten it up, you know, a lot of letters.
Oh, myself, what should I call myself, John Vendetta?
Whatever you'd like.
Alright, that's my man. What do you got, Kevin McKenna?
Alright, well, you know, before I get to my question, you know, I, I came here for the first time, the last meeting, what was it, the 24th? And what amazes me-
Was it May 24th?
What amazes me is, and, and, you know, I became interested in a lot of the, the good things, bad things that have been in the news, and, you know, you have a gentleman here, Robert Rip, who I don't know from a hole in the wall, who wants to bring something to your attention that could, sounds like it could be important, it just amazes me that, especially after waiting here for four hours, I didn't, but apparently he did, that you take this attitude like you don't want to listen to what somebody has to say, and I just find it rude, and I'm amazed that you don't want to hear what somebody has to say that could be important, you know, it's not like there has been no wrongdoings going on in this Town of Oyster Bay, you know, and I'm confident that there's going to be more to come, so for him to want to tell you something that could be helpful to you and to you not want to listen just amazes me. That's just a statement.
You apparently know much more than anyone else in this room, Kevin.
I, I know what I know, yes.
Okay.
Okay. My question-
What's your question?
At the last meeting, and I'm sorry that Councilwoman Johnson's not here, she actually, when, when Jonathan Picard, I don't know if I'm saying this, when he did his presentation after the meeting, there were questions that were asked of him-
Do you know what it's about?
That some were amazed that he didn't know the answer to. One of them, Councilwoman Johnson asked him, which had to do with Chopra, and hiring of K2, and blah, 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 is he confident that there aren't any judgments or anything that might come out of the woodwork in regards to him taking on SRB? And he did not know the answer to that. I'm curious to know if it's something that was followed up on, I'm not sure what the process is when important questions are asked, do you need to follow up after the meeting to get them individually, or is that something that you could address right now?
It depends on the question on that one, I will have to follow up, and I think Leonard Genova might have done some follow-up on it, but if you can be patient, and we can get it back out here, we are made aware of, you can get Leonard, it may be a lot easier to speculate.
And, thank you, and I'll, so I don't run out of time and ask my question.
No, this won't be charged to your time, though, we're not-
I, after the last meeting, I did communicate with Councilwoman Alessia, only because I got her email easily, and she might have shared with you some of the things that I had written that were opinions, as well as there were some questions that she told me she was going to try to get answers to, along the lines of SRB.
Okay.
Which I would think that these are questions that you would want to know the answers to before you go ahead and do what you're gonna do with SRB.
Could we give you some indication that you don't want to know the answers to, or not?
Yeah, because I still haven't gotten the answers, so-
Well, that's a-
In fairness, I'm sorry, it's important.
Let me finish, in fairness to, so, the Councilwoman was nice enough to, I guess, raise the issue, I did receive a phone call yesterday from, from Matt-
Matt Rosé?
Rosé, who I believe is here, and I called him back today, unfortunately, he wasn't available, and I thought this would be a great forum for him to, he was calling me back, I think, to give me an answer to the question, which was, "Does the board have any proof that there was a financial transaction done between Chopra and the other three investors where they purchased the shares from, whether it be Mr. Singh, H Singh, or Ruby Singh? Was there a transaction done financially?"
Okay, that's your ultimate question?
That's my question.
Okay, now I understand.
And that question was asked at the last-
Really wasn't made that clear until you just said it, at least it wasn't made clear to me. Matt, do you-
He was gonna answer that question.
I don't know what he's going to do.
Okay, I don't know either.
He was trying, like, which look you did.
I don't know either. And I just thought that rather than-
Come to the podium, Matt, this is what you're not-
I just thought that rather than answer it directly to me, that there's other people who also probably want to know the answer to that, it shouldn't just be between me and you, so, thank you.
Well, we're in a public forum, and he's not gonna say anything to you that couldn't be said publicly, and we'll-
Yes, quite, quite similar, but I was, I was calling Mr. McKenna yesterday to let him know that I'd been in contact with the Town's outside council, we're working on getting the information together, unfortunately, Mr. Picard is dealing with a difficult situation of his own, it's a little bit difficult to get in touch with him at the moment, so to the extent that that factual information is within the possession of Mr. Picard, I'd take a little bit of patience so that we can get the information. With respect to the other issues that Mr. McKenna raised, they involve interpretations of law, as-
One other issue, we talked, he has one very valid question, which I'm prepared to answer, I thought you were going to, but obviously you came up short after talking to Jonathan Picard, and by the way, has a terribly serious-
Yes.
-almost tragic family health emergency that he's been attending to for almost a week now, but I can answer the question that Kevin McKenna asked, so I'll do that, there was something else I had.
And the only question, the only other question that Mr. McKenna and I had discussed in our initial phone call recorded, SRB and their licenses with the State Liquor Authority, that was the issue- Thousands of the issues that I'm referring to involve interpretations of law. Reasonable minds can differ, and, and working on getting an answer to those questions.
All right. Uh, Kevin, if you want to come back to the question. Um, you, you may not have been at prior board meetings, but...
What?
No, that's okay, that's, that's, I understand. Uh, what was made very abundantly clear that as part of any transaction that may take place, that might take place between the town and what you've referred to as the investors, one essential point, uh, was that going forward, there can be no involvement whatsoever of any kind or nature on the part of, uh, H Singh, his wife, or any other of the Singh family members. That was made abundantly clear. So that is an essential term of any agreement that we have with the investors going forward. Now, to that end, uh, it would, it would, I think logic would dictate that, yes, there, if it hasn't happened yet, there will have to be some kind of a transaction whereby, uh, the interests of H Singh and Ruby Singh are, uh, dispelled, for lack of a better word. So, what they're, what, what are you saying? What they are doing among themselves to accomplish that end, that's really between them. The town is really not involved in that transaction. The only thing I can tell you is, if the transaction does go forward and we do end up with the new investors operating any of the prior SRB entities, it will absolutely unquestionably, uh, have to be without, uh, any interests on the part of either H Singh, Ruby Singh, or any Singh family members.
That makes sense, but I was under the impression that at prior meetings, it was said that the shares were already purchased.
Um, I'm not, I, I, who said it? Do you remember who said it?
I don't remember. I, I just watched a lot of video on, online, and, and that's what prompted me to ask this question, and the reason I'm asking this question...
By the way, I'm not saying they haven't. I, the town really isn't privy to that. If representations were made that they have been or are about to be overlooked, it's... The point, I think the relevant point, is that if and when these transactions with the, uh, investors comes to fruition, there, there can be no interest whatsoever on the part of H Singh, his wife, or his family. I think that we can speak to.
So, what you're saying is that, that the town is allowing four individuals, that they don't know who they really are, to run, to run operations while...
No, no, wait, wait, you said, please, that's why this is difficult. You just said, "The town is allowing four individuals," and I'm quoting this, "who they don't know who they are." I don't, I don't, I don't, I'm trying to help you, but I don't know what that means.
Thanks for trying to help me. What I meant was...
I hope you're a wise guy.
Well...
I'm trying to help you. What's the question?
Right. What I meant, what I meant was, that you've got four individuals running, running large facilities, or one of them a large facility, and you don't even know if they own shares of a company that, uh, is under investigation.
No, that's not what we said. The only thing we said, the only thing I represented to you here today is that if and when it comes to fruition, neither H Singh, nor his wife, nor any Singh family member will be involved in that operation. That's all I said.
I, I understand that, but when, when you're talking about when the transaction comes to fruition, I, I take that as the transaction meaning, meaning that the town is going to approve them assuming everything that SRB, uh, signed up to. What I'm talking about...
No, no, what, if I got it correct, though. The town will likely, again, if somebody comes to fruition, will likely execute a new concession agreement.
With a different company?
With, 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 with a different entity, yeah.
Yeah, I've read that.
Okay. Now, what's going on there now, we're monitoring very, very carefully. We do it really on a, pretty much on a daily basis. Uh, it, as we've been monitoring it now, how long, Commissioner?
Since they opened up last Friday.
No, no, I'm talking about...
Uh, Woodlands?
Yeah.
Since last September.
All right, so we've been monitoring very carefully since then. It's being run very, very well. Uh, we're very satisfied with what they, they've done there so far. So, for example, when someone says, "You don't know these people," well, we do know these people.
I know that, right. I know that you know the people. I, I was being... You mean, you mean that the, I was under the impression that the emails that I sent to Miss Alessia might have been shared. I sent recent, I sent recent customer, uh, reviews from Yelp that are recent. They're from the Woodlands, from, one was from March. They're fairly recent, and you, you haven't seen those?
No, I haven't seen them, but, but...
You're saying that it's being run very well, maybe from a standpoint of, uh, what you see, but it's from a customer satisfaction standpoint. If you haven't seen the Yelp reviews over the past few months, I would encourage you, anybody can go on Yelp, and you can see what the customers think about specifically certain individuals that don't return phone calls there, trying to get information about weddings or what have you.
I don't know, I, I'm not familiar with Yelp, but I am familiar with literally thousands of people. Well, have you shrugged your shoulders?
No, I'm saying, you can check with any of them.
I know, I, I, I hear you, but let me tell you about my experience. This is your experience, I'm gonna tell you my experience. We've been monitoring it on a day-in, day-out basis. Uh, we have talked with literally hundreds of people who have attended functions there. I personally have talked to brides and grooms, and parents of brides and grooms, and family members of brides and grooms. The commissioner has probably witnessed and talked to, I, I don't want to exaggerate, but a few hundred people?
Absolutely.
All right, and thousands of people have gone through the portals. And there are some people who have pointed out things that might have been improved. And there are other people who said, "It was a, a, a," let me finish. "It was a wonderful experience." Now, I'm sure there are people who were not as happy. I don't think you can go into any business anywhere in the Town of Oyster Bay, where you're not gonna find somebody who's gonna have a problem with a business, and it's always gonna be. But I think the consensus is overwhelmingly, overwhelmingly favorable to how the operation is being run. Commissioner, do you mind exaggerating? Do you want to share your experience, or, we're going way...
It was a good day on Mother's Day from some of the reviews.
Mother's Day, I understand there was a problem with it.
Yeah, there was a problem. We know, we know there was a problem on Mother's Day, because they booked for, I don't know the number, and more people showed up, you know, than, than, you know, than they booked for. And they tried to accommodate them. Sometimes they shouldn't accommodate them. They said, "Well, sorry, we don't have no room," but they tried to accommodate. So we, we do that the next day, because I got some calls over. So as far as the supervisor said, since September, okay, I've attended many weddings. I, you know, listen, you're not gonna please everybody, you know, it could be hundreds, a thousand people go to a function, and somebody has a different opinion on food. But as far as the people that ran those weddings, whether it's the bride, the families who paid for the wedding, who prepped for years on their weddings, we were in discussions with them on a day-to-day, daily basis. We've even sat down, even did their final wedding plans, okay? So I've attended the thirty weddings, I've met more brides, I've been invited to more weddings, and those are the people that we deal with on a day-to-day, up until their wedding, including one the other day that, that I was even there, and I spoke to them with the general manager about their upcoming wedding, who's called us week in, week out, because she's nervous, and, you know, and we've taken care of it. So, when somebody makes an opinion on whether it's Yelp or whatever, listen, thousands of people go there, everybody's entitled to, to opinion. But as far as the town's end of it, and the people that, that were the recipients of that, the wedding, the families, we had no issues. Did we miss some? Not to, what, to my knowledge, or to other people's knowledge, but when you, when you're there since September, and you really got the pulse of what's going on, you know, I, I can't go with it in the newspapers, I can't go with it in Yelp. All I have to go is with the people that were at that wedding, that paid for that wedding, that planned their wedding, or their functions, for years in advance, that they were satisfied. And that's all I think I could, you know, convey.
Time's up, time's up.
I understand.
I'm not charging you with this time. No, Kevin, I think, I'll, I'll, you know, I'm charging you with my time either. I think when you go on Yelp, when you go on Yelp and people Yelp, how many comments did you see there, like, ten, twenty, thirty on it?
Not, not even that many.
Oh, okay.
But they were recent ones, and the only reason, and I'll, I'll end. The only reason I bring this up is because you have four people, admittedly, it's been acknowledged by, I think, the attorney, they've never been in this business before. And they're running an operation, in my opinion only, that's why I'm on this question about the transaction. They're, they're, the Singh's are not gonna give away that contract, they're not walking, they're, they're, they're running it behind the scenes. You have no proof, you've just admitted, there's no proof thus far that there's been any purchase of the shares where the Singh's are removed. I personally believe they're still involved from a distance.
I didn't mean to say that, but go ahead, I don't want...
I personally believe they're still involved from a distance, and it's gonna be egg on the Town of Oyster Bay's face because the four people that are running it, okay, one of them we know, as of today, is still a convicted felon, okay, the state liquor authority since the last meeting.
You're talking about the DUI charge against Chopra?
Well, it's not just the DUI charge.
No, 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 no.
It's a LeAndres Law charge, yes, it's not...
Are we, are we...
Yes, yes, he's a felon.
Are we talking about the DUI incident? He took a felony plea, and it's on for sentencing?
He, he pled guilty to a felony.
I just said, he took a felony plea, and it's on, just let me talk. I'm not gonna charge...
Didn't take a plea.
I'm not gonna charge you time. I'm gonna charge you time, don't worry about it. Are we talking about the incident?
Yes.
Where Robbie Chopra, okay, pled, took a felony plea on a, on a DUI charge, and is on for sentencing around mid-June. Is that the incident we're talking about?
Whatever the date, so yes, that's...
Okay, all right, I just want to make sure that there was another felony out there.
The only reason I bring that up is because...
You don't have to give me a reason.
Well, I'm gonna give you a reason, and I thank you for allowing me to take the extra time.
And that's all.
Is because it's been confirmed to the state liquor authority since the last meeting. They know nothing about Chopra or anyone else, okay? The liquor license that was being, uh, used to run is still under the Singh's. In fact, it was, I think, suspended for a little while. The liquor license is in effect, okay, but they know nothing about Chopra or anyone else that is taking over this company. They don't even have an application from them. That's something that I brought up to Jonathan. I asked if you guys were concerned about it. I'm telling you, those are the facts, and, and you can do what you want with them.
All right, I, I think the questions that you're asking are the issues that you're proposing. I don't know if they're capable of resolution here. I can tell you...
No.
No, but I can tell you that the lawyer representing the investors has made it very clear. They've been in contact with the SLA. I believe they participated in a proceeding with them sometime during the month of May. You may not know about this. You don't, I don't know that you know everything, because I don't know that.
No, the attorney stated here, of that...
No, 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 I didn't say that, no, no.
They didn't know?
Now, let me finish. I said the attorney for the investors. The attorney that was here at the last meeting.
Right.
One was the one who did the, uh, the venue process for us over at Tappan Beach. The other was the fellow you referred to earlier, Jonathan Pickard. He's representing the town, uh, as we go forward, looking to enter into a new concession agreement at the Woodlands, at Tobay, Woodlands and Tobay. What I was saying to you is that the lawyer who represents the new investors, the gentleman's name is Ed Troy, and he's been involved with Jonathan Pickard for a very long time now, uh, trying to hammer out, uh, the, uh, the new concession agreement. And Troy has represented to us that they have been in, uh, contact with the SLA, that what they're doing at Woodlands now is acceptable, it's fine, there's not a problem with it, and that if and when, um, it's necessary, depending on, I guess, where we go with the concession agreement, they'll do what they need to do to meet requirements of the SLA. But I, I don't think there's any prob, where it's represented to us by Troy, that there is no problem there now.
I can tell my lawyer, I'm Chopra, making believe?
Not Chopra, intelligent.
Well, whoever his, whoever the...
I think it's Brad Chopra.
Chopra. Whoever the new people are that are running it as, as we speak, they're running it without their own liquor license, okay? And as of last week, the state liquor authority is starting an investigation to find out why.
That makes, that makes...
They have not heard anything from these, so the lawyer that told you that, Kia, this other lawyer, he might believe that. It's a very simple phone call that anybody here could make to the SLA, and you could find out if they know about any of these new people. Because if I was Chopra, I wouldn't be applying for a liquor license while I'm a convicted felon, because you can't get one until, he could possibly get it if he gets the reduction next week when he goes to court or whatever. It's not guaranteed, but it's not definite that he, but they don't know anything about him, that's all I'm saying.
I think, though, Kevin, I think what you're doing is, you're arriving at conclusions that really aren't supported by the facts that I think any of us know, because I think that's...
Going by what the SLA said.
Okay, but I'm telling you, the lawyer who told me the SLA said that.
Lawyer might believe that.
And you might believe, and, and how...
From his wife.
But why do I say you, you might believe it too? I, I, you, you seem credible, you seem a very nice guy. You seem to very much have the interest of the town in your heart, but we're, we're always... We're all, I'm sorry, go ahead, wait.
So you need to tell me that you're just gonna believe what you've heard from that attorney?
Did I say that?
No, I'm asking you, are you going to find out from the SLA?
No, but you talk, but you talk to me in the terms of a prosecutor. You say to me...
I always wanted to be a prosecutor.
You talk to me, you talk to me in the language, well, you, I, you may think that's funny, and I think you're right, it is funny.
I thought it was funny.
But, yeah, you, you probably do. But when you talk to me in the terms of a prosecutor, and you say, "Are you telling me?" I'm not telling you anything. I'm, you're, you're asking me questions, I'm giving you the best, best answers I can.
I'm doing this.
All right, you, you know what?
I'm doing this, I'm, I'm...